Right, let's call the meeting to order, and let's take a roll call.
Greg, Larry, you're here.
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 Cindy Ray.
Here.
Matt Blaskel.
Here.
Nina.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, um, so you had minutes on on included, and we have a motion to approve the minutes, any changes or else?
I'm not the motion to approve minutes, second.
Motion in a second, um, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, what's that? Those two, Wayne and Wayne.
Second.
Yes. Greg's second. Okay. And Carrie, got the approval of that, okay, so now moving on to the notice of the public hearing nine seventy-two.
Notice of the public hearing, please state notice that an application has been made by Peter Schubert-Bottom, Dave Woodward, five twenty-seven fifth street, the Hudson Minnesota five five nine four seven for a conditional use permit, section fourteen point seven subdivision one, subsection one, and book of project on progress, who are part of the northwestern border, southwest border, section two, the county one, we range for Houston County Minnesota, parcel zero five zero zero three one zero zero one. Said out from standing and making application, R S D owner said this by lands, the hearing on this application will be held with the Houston County Commissioners in the city of California, Minnesota at six P M on Thursday, May twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. All persons having an interest in the matter will be given the opportunity to submit comments relative to the granting or denying of said application. Comments should be mailed to the environmental services department through your force of market street, California Minnesota, five five nine two one, or email to martin dot eric dot C O dot Houston dot M N dot U S. Must be received by Tuesday, May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Comments of regardless of permission received by this date will be part of the public record and will be made available for review by the planning commission prior to the meeting. Houston County Planning Commission by Martin Eric Zoning Administration.
Okay, thank you. Moving right along, so this was, um, this particular um, issue was tabled by the board of adjustments, as you mentioned last month, so.
You had to write the last meeting.
Yes.
Are you second of us by now?
Not gonna say yes, but not gonna say no.
They don't have a choice.
Can we table it?
Table that, how can I table it? Okay, you wanna move through this? And, uh, let's see, anything that we need to add here, so you're, we're talking about a, a conditional use permit now. And hopefully, everybody heard what was going on, um, with the discussion at the board of adjustments, um, currently, because we had some updates to, um, the property, uh, placement of the building, also, uh, slightly, um, smaller, um, building, um, so what do we want to, um, does anybody want to add anything here?
So we're going from twelve hundred and eighty feet, living quarters, to a four thousand.
Say that again.
We're going from twelve hundred and nine feet to four thousand and some feet, and difference.
That's part of the building, right?
So, so the building is four thousand some feet.
It's smaller, yeah, I think it was confusing, because there was another.
The previous figure was large.
Right, and that, so we went from largest to larger, and then now down to what is being requested, yeah.
What do you lose, eight hundred feet, cover up eight hundred feet?
Would be a total of thirteen.
Looks like it's a bit more square than elongated.
Yeah, it's twenty feet shorter as well.
Okay, and you also commented last time about, um, the, uh, like, a garage for your camper and all that.
Yes, so the toys aren't sitting out in the yard.
Yep.
And vehicles.
Mm-hmm.
Keep it clean.
Mm-hmm, okay, okay, do you wanna go over anything else?
I guess the uniqueness of the situation with the condition use permit is, is that, you know, the trailer would have been continuously occupied, that'd be a different situation. It wouldn't be in this category, what, what you run into is it has been in the last ten years, and it didn't have that, as evidenced by the fact that, you know, and you could see the windows were broken out, and it certainly had not been occupied.
Yeah.
Occupied is a very interesting term, that doesn't necessarily mean that you're living. It's more like you're using, because we will have one coming up in a couple of more months, that's gonna be just like that, it's this, that, so in this instance, you can certainly show that that did not over the last couple of years, for sure, you know, that's, that, you know, it's, it's beyond the eight year occupation, so that kicks it into eight conditions.
So not new sense of residence.
Right.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Um, okay, so, any additional comments you would like to add? A lot.
More talked, I don't know.
Okay. Maybe one, yes, yes.
Okay, I'm not. Fine. Yeah. This is my first year on the planning commission, very interesting. Is this gonna be like a shouse?
Yeah, like a barn.
Okay, and your garage would be on, the house would be on the end facing the main high.
Yes.
Yeah.
And a garage or shop, or whatever you wanna call it, be up facing
Yes.
the air direction, going up wealthy hill. Okay, looking on the map here, I don't, everybody can look on page two. The diagram shows here the proposed building.
Yeah.
But the way it looks, it's up in the one quarter where your shop will be, or storage or whatever, garage. It looks like it's right up against the hill, is there gonna be
Yep.
distance from the corner of the building to the hill?
Yes, that's why we're putting a engineered retaining wall in.
And asking for those variances that were just passed.
Yeah.
So that would be a lot for that space.
Do you know how many feet that'll be, or?
It's gonna be probably about twelve through there.
Okay, just look at the plan here, it looks like you got a wedge right there.
And then, obviously, by the house area, the living quarters area, we're gonna have a lot to expect.
Yeah.
You can dig twelve feet out of this hill, all the way in front of it, all the way.
No, it's not quite to the toe.
You mean, not quite to the toe?
The corner of the building.
Well, the toe of the hill is supposed to be twenty-five feet from the toe of the hill. So is your building gonna sit on that corner, where it's twenty-five feet from the?
No, nope, that's why we're putting that retaining wall, and that's why we got that barrier.
Okay, so how can we, how can you dig out the hill and nobody else can? Our, our ordinance says you have to leave the hill alone, you cannot disturb the hill. And that's why we have a twenty-five foot from the toe of the hill, so you don't disturb the hill. And that's in our ordinance.
That's true.
The ordinance says you gotta be twenty-five feet away from the toe of the hill.
Setback.
Yep, okay, twenty-five, so if he's there, then he's gotta go twenty-five feet closer to the road.
Going back and looking at what was addressed in the previous.
I mean, we're, that's our ordinance.
Section twenty, or, grades to reduce setback from total.
No longer than I know about it.
Section twenty-nine seventeen subdivision two, that was what was voted. There. So variants of setback from total.
So we have that, we have that, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So how can you dig out the block? Nobody else can, we passed one three months ago in Brownsville, and we could not dig out the hill. They don't let you stay grass, they can't touch that hill because of worship. If we have a seven inch flood, and he dug that hill out, twelve fifteen feet, it's gonna be straight up and down.
Well.
And if that hillside comes down and crushes this house and kills them, is that our fault?
It's, uh, I mean, the question of stability, what is addressed in section point nine, there is a discussion about maintaining stability, and that's, that's where we're coming from with the, with the engineer.
So what you also mentioned, um, Marty, is a, a building permit will not be granted until a stability factor of safety of one point three or greater has been demonstrated.
Right.
So this has to be engineered.
Yeah, this, the model will be run and decided.
Okay.
It says here on page five, setbacks from the toll of the block. Structure shall be set back forty feet from the top of a bluff, and twenty-five feet from the toll of the block.
Right, that's what we.
It's on the diagram.
With the various previous here.
Um, so the other question was about, um, the proposed septic system, um, which was revised from last month's meeting. So now there'll be a green field, and, um, we have that, uh, preliminary, um, design in our package here. So that's a change too, because I think that was a question of whether that was gonna be in front of the house towards.
Got it.
Right.
But you're going with a moan.
Yes, yes.
Yes, that was.
That was a required.
Yeah.
That was a suggestion and requirement.
Yes, we have the space now because of the house changes.
Building changes, yeah. It was from a holding tank to a tank.
Mm-hmm. Which and asked, asked by, you'll probably be happier with it, yes. Yes.
And I think one of the other things that I'm guessing you're gonna feel is senior time dose. It's probably, or, is probably proposing. Basically, when the time doses, then, they won't meter it all in the green field. It'll be held, and the person, that they will meter it. It's based what will happen, this is, it'll sit in the holding tank, and it's pumped out, uh, very uniform. Meaning like later, and people, where the case may be, it's not directly to the beginning.
Has it been, okay.
Okay.
There's three tanks in the moan system. First one's for the solid waste, the next one is the water, and the next one is the water you're supposed to be able to drink.
Yeah.
And that's what gets pumped out.
Yeah. Okay. We have that.
I haven't found anybody that wanna drink that water.
No chance of. No. Okay, uh, anything else, what, so you had?
Looking, looking at this diagram on page two, you're only fifty-three feet, fifty-three feet, five inches from the center of the road.
Yeah.
So there will not be much play area for the kids, if you got more advice.
Yeah, well, we own the adjacent twenty, twenty-five next to.
I know.
Across the road, or?
No, it connects directly.
Like a hillside.
Yeah, but there's a big field up top, as, the kids play up there all the time on it.
We also have the section where the camper is currently sitting in that lot, that would be all, uh, yard, so, on the north end of the.
There's probably a lot to run.
Yeah.
Where all your electrical and power comes in there, that's where you're gonna have your playground.
I don't know if your township has any restrictions on future tree plantings or anything, um, our, our township has one, it's sixty-five feet from the center line, I don't know, I don't know if your township has anything there, you know, it's something you'd have to look into on your township. Is for visibility, future visibility for the people on the road, safety of the people on the road, and safety for your children, and everything.
This is a dead end, right?
Yes.
This is a start.
Yeah.
How many places are past this proposed site?
Three or four, four, five. And, uh, yeah, Annie wealthy, very wealthy, who's the next one?
I think Swan Beck's very.
There's two other Elsens out, behind you, Jerry.
Barry Rudy. Barry Rudy.
Any other questions or concerns, you guys can bring them.
Well, I got.
How about public? We've gotten some, um, comments earlier, previously, and those were all included in our package, so.
Did you ever?
Support.
Did you ever read what Soil and Water said about it, wonders their feeling?
Basically, their, their comments were on the variance part, and we, we read them during the variance.
Yeah.
Just reading from my notes here. It's basically, it's comment on the project, number four sixteen twenty-four, Dave Walter from Bowser, called about the project, and Martin Eric went over the proposed variances, including the setback for Rocky Drive, setback for the north property line, and setback for the toll of the block. Dave was told the sequence of events, and that the board faculty was spelt all issues with cross stability, and then it was made clear to Peter Schubert-Bottom, that P E will have to sign off on the design of the slow work, and will have to be in place for a C U P application.
Okay, and in your notes, you have laid it out, as far as, like, the culverts, um, large culvert that, uh, provides the surface water, I know, from the neighboring hills, because we talked about that before, and you'll go into that, um, hopefully, it's some of the findings regarding, um, runoff and all that, um, but that structure can't be altered.
Right.
So, um, you know, in my view, even before we go into the findings, it sounds like, I mean, we vetted this through, um, you have with, uh, a couple of times with the boards, and, um, as, as you realize that, um, there's going to be um, some real, um, crossing the Ts, dotting the Is, um, view of this project. And I think that's important to say, because, you know, that with all the discussion here, it just doesn't go away and, and leave us, um, we will, you know, continue to address if there's an issue.
Absolutely. Just go get some ripoff.
Absolutely. Yeah.
So in other words, we can't grant, uh, the C U P until this cement, or this engineer does this wall?
Basically, we wanna see the design at some point, but we gotta have that.
So in other words, then we should just table this for now, you know, he comes back with that design?
Well, the, I mean, realize we only have sixty days, and if we don't do it in sixty days, then it's approved.
The C U P is conditional on the approval of the, uh, design engineer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if that's okay.
We could pass the C U P, but that would still be contingent on what?
Right, it would. If he doesn't create, it's high. We're done. Or if he doesn't meet the one point three, we're done.
So what, have we gotta put that in there?
I mean, he's gotta take a lot of money in it, I don't, any.
Yeah.
I have already.
Hundred percent.
That's fair. It is, but it is what it is.
I'll just mention that Marty and I were at the Hope Township meeting the other night, on Tuesday night, and Marty presented all the issues ever, as far as setbacks, and, um, explained all the facts with the board, and they had several questions, um, very skeptical at first, but toward the end, they came around and all, accepted the idea that there will be, could be a building, you think, passed here, so they seem to approve it.
So in other words, if something would happen and Nate loses his house, who's responsible? Houston County? Or Hope Township?
That's a good question. Well, that's, I'm just stating what, what they said.
Well, I mean, we're putting a place that's very difficult, I'm sorry to say that, I'm sorry for these people.
Usually we find force majeure, force of nature, as insurance people recall.
Yep.
That, those are, you know, proximate cause, and what something likes to do, so you get in that really large random event, you're probably gonna have a problem, you'll have all these other activities to, to make the correlation between one and the other starts to get pretty tough.
I agree, that's what we have, the zoning ordinance law, is to protect the colony and its residents, and this is a decision we have to make, you know. It's a tough one, I understand.
Well, it wasn't that long ago, that whole thing flooded, so I mean, we know that can happen. I mean, we gotta be careful here, we're putting this man's family in jeopardy. It'd be sick, the death of a floodguy there and took his building out, and then somebody lose your life, I think I'd feel pretty bad, I mean. This is, uh, we're talking a pretty serious deal.
One thing I'd say.
I value my family's life a lot, and I would not put them in jeopardy, and I have put a lot of time, thought, and effort into this whole project, and it comes with cost. Um, at the end of the day, you kinda have to take that.
Yeah, right.
Correct.
Yeah.
That is my responsibility, to put my family, I mean, in a vehicle, drive down the road. Put them in my house, put them to sleep. I mean, that's my responsibility, I'm not gonna put them in carver's way.
Yeah, I agree, and I think we are to enforce and intercept and enforce, um, the stipulations that you abide by. Um, you know, so if we, if we go through that, and, um, give you the best of our knowledge of how, you know, how this can be done, and it's just like any other situation, if it's built to that stipulation, you know, and that requirement, um, according to what we know, um, then that's, the onus is, I would say, transferred, you know, onto that property onus.
Well, certainly, with the professional engineer.
Well, yes, using the expertise of the professional engineer, definitely. Any other comments?
Is it, is it fifty by forty?
When is the, this is a single story, right?
Yeah, well, they do a lot.
The houses, okay.
It just pulled one of them over in Bunny Creek. Does look nice.
Yeah. The shelves, you're. That's good, yeah. Okay. Any other comments? From anybody before we go on and go through the findings?
Subdivision one findings, the planning commission shall not recommend a conditional use of this permit unless they find the following, number one, if the proposed use consults with the county management, staff analysis, single family non-farm dwellers are traditionally allowed to be built with both protection, which protects agricultural interests, which is a goal of the comprehensive.
All those in favor of the finding, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
Yes.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
Yeah, fourteen, thirteen, fifteen.
Well, you're, okay.
I'd recommend a roll call vote from now on. I'll second that.
You wanna roll call on each one, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
From this point forward, or you want to back?
If there's any confusion with the last one, should we just, let's just do them all.
Okay.
Okay.
Good idea.
So, so let's go back and roll call that, rather than having that was gonna be.
For the first, first one, we didn't give them.
Yep.
Culvert was confirmed to the county management, staff analysis, single family non-farm dwellers additionally allowed to make the building structure which protects agricultural interests to go over the comprehensive plans. Roll, Greg, Larry?
No.
Mike, John Meyer?
No.
Terry Goss, then?
No.
Cindy Ray?
Yes.
Matt Blaskel?
No.
In this.
Yes. That's her, yes.
Don't worry, it's all, it's all sequels.
Roll call, it's roll call.
You go for that, I can tell.
Yeah, give me with the sound of a break.
What's that?
Uh, that's the, the, the goal.
My explanation is because of, uh, organs, not following, so that's my issue.
So, okay. What about other, other reasoning? So we know. Any other comment, yes or no?
I'm pretty sure I'll.
No, I said no.
These two here, and John said no. No, the first time, no, the first time I was on, right. And then they decided to go to roll call.
Right, what changed? This part, yes.
Sometimes you can sit here and not say a word, and, um.
So. Yeah, I'm deciding more for, since that, everyone just sort of, yes, except one. Switch to normal.
That's why we have the roll call vote.
I think it's clearer this way, if we do, do you have a roll call?
The roll call's been any.
Yeah.
It is, but usually when we want roll calls, it's wise.
Yeah.
Because we have to defend our.
You gotta defend your thoughts.
Position to say, this is proceeding like what. So maybe.
If you're looking at, um, use, the parcel, the thing, that, like, that's what you're.
Variance is there.
We're not, nope, no, we're not going back on their decision, so, if that's already been made, yeah, that is it.
Right, need to clear the, the question. It's what you're voting on is that, single family non-farm dwellers are traditionally allowed to be built with protection, yes, this protects interest, which is a goal of the comprehensive. That's what you're.
Yeah.
Or no, there would, same with that, like, law. You're allowing roll.
So, which part of this is not conforming to the C L U P? I guess that's what I'd be curious about. For most.
One, it's, it's for the whole.
Correct, yes, so this is a sticky subject.
Yeah, both know that, that. Right, is it tied, this is a law, right? That's the majority.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you're, you're out, so this will, this will be, that's it.
Let's finish, let's finish the findings, so we go through all the findings, and then we make the final decision at the end. That's the way it's supposed to be done.
Are you gonna have the other people say why to vote or no?
I guess we'd like to document, to document why people voted.
Wayne, what you.
Well, I voted no, because you went up into the blocks, and it states, right here, states, you don't wanna go up into the blocks. All right, you know, they say, away from the top of the block, just wait, stay away from the bottom of the block. You know? And.
That variance already happened?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, we're not voting on the variance, we're voting on.
Yeah, forget about variances here, we're talking about ordinances.
Yeah.
As they can have a hall, but they can't have that big hall, so.
Mm-hmm. Well, I look at it as, um, you know, your staff analysis explains what this means, and what we're voting on, um, that it's, um, conditionally allowed in the egg protection district, so basically, and I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but when you're voting no, you're saying you don't want to grant this single family non-farm dwelling because of what?
My, my reasoning for saying no is because of the ordinances.
Well, that's why we have ordinances.
That's why we have ordinances.
You read the block land production ordinance, setback from the toe of the block, structure shall be setback forty feet from the top of the block, and twenty-five feet from the toe of the block, and this isn't. That's, that's why I voted no.
I'm, I, I'm saying no, because I just don't feel I can say yes, when we should come to it. This doesn't feel right, just the way that, it's all positioned, like, uh, what's it? Franklin was saying, trying to fit, you know, size thirteen into the size eight, and I don't, it's, I just feel confident in saying yes, that this conforms, so, what we've got, what. Just doesn't work.
And I did hear from the previous meeting, where we were talking about, you know, you have to rely on your professional engineers, and those that are actually, you know, viewing the area and checking this out, and to at least explore it. Because I don't know if that's actually been determined. Cause I don't know if that's actually been determined yet, we still have to reach that um stability factor. For one thing.
There's still a design that's acceptable as I was in general. If you were.
Engineer can prove anything.
Yes.
It's like this, they put a bridge in below my place. First thing they told me when they put the bridge in, they said, we're not gonna change a thing. Then when they put the bridge in, they flooded my farm for a foot. Raised the, the, the level of the river a foot. And they said, that's tough, you gotta live with it. Because the state said that they could raise it, they could do it. Which was really wrong.
Okay.
Oh. Sky strikes all around the world, people with a third. Yeah. Right, it's a minor issue for Trump.
Problem solving.
You can go, you can go down there where that bridge is on mine. And you can see they put a dam in below the bridge. It's all heavy rock. And the reason they put a dam in, because they only had one crane there and one crane to set the bridge in place. So they had to fill the river with rock so they could drive the crane across. They did that on purpose.
Oh, yeah.
And they flooded my land, and I had to sell my land.
I, I think they definitely build this all safely. Use the whole. In that area. Do you have the right general contractor? It's not.
I guess the other thing just to keep in mind is they brought in a proposal that met out standard, you know, the only reason we're hearing variants is because they have this kind of a special request. Um, but if they had brought in a building permit for a mobile so, that fourteen by seventeen, so that'll have, except by standards. We still need a CUPD because of not having.
And so, using this space.
Yeah. And so, even if now the board does not grant it those, but if that hadn't taken place, we'd still be in the same.
Situation. Right. So is there anything that we can look at that would change that or modify? You're just, you're talking about.
We're gonna have to change some ordinances if we wanna change.
We'd have to change.
Change ordinance, and that ain't gonna happen for a while.
Well, we have to decide this issue on the facts that we have and on the ordinances we have, so I would suggest we go ahead.
Yeah, we've got, finding one is done, it was loaded, we had four to two or four to three?
Three, three.
We had four, John, Larry, Wayne and myself, or no. We had four to three, all right, let's move on, then the findings number three.
If we both know on one. All of them. You haven't got anything? Well, what was it? We need to be not. So. At any point, we keep on going.
And you guys are making your recommendations to support.
Yeah, we have to finish it, we have to do the findings.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, goes on from here, our vote, so.
Yeah, it's your.
Yeah. So I'd rather see, I think we need to see the rest of them. To, you know, see if it's, some of them. So the second one?
That, that the applicant demonstrates a need for the proposed use, staff analysis, this is a replacement of an existing dwelling. The same, and single-family housing is needed. Ray, Larry?
No.
And Bellmeyer?
No.
Larry Gossett?
Oh.
Sorry, Mary.
No.
Cindy Ray?
Yes.
And the last one?
They say yes, they do. They are demonstrating a need.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, you got that? I'm gonna go.
Anytime.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a need, but the need, the place is not a place to build a house. You know, even, we're not compliant, so nothing.
Well, I don't blame the engineers, cause I've dealt with them. And when they built that bridge, they put a culvert in, the culvert filled up with dirt. You know, you can't tell me an engineer knows anything when it takes a huge culvert, fills the bowl with dirt, and just lets it sit. Right now, that culvert on that bridge is two feet underneath the water, the dirt. You know?
Okay, right, I got it. Larry?
After looking at the site on Monday driving in, I just do not see a good proposed site for a house with such a tight corners.
He, he voted. He's, he's good. Um, but even voting affirmative here, I think we need an explanation or just a comment on that, and you know, once again, I voted yes because um this is a straightforward question about um proposed use, they want a house, this is the house that they're building. So um I'm not looking at, you know, how it's, how and where, actually, it's um.
I'll second Cindy's comments.
Yeah, just as we're going through with night one or two, you guys can comment, you don't want that too.
But I just wanna make a point that there's different sides to it, okay? All right, so three?
Right. That the proposed use will not degrade the water quality of the town. Staff analysis that the applicant will be required to install an operating compliance septic system and have been removing other potential tampering sources from the property. Ray, Larry?
Yes.
And Bellmeyer?
Yes.
Larry Gossett?
Yes.
Cindy Ray?
Yes.
John Glatter?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Number four, that the proposed use will not adversely increase the quantity of water runoff. Staff analysis, existing water management structures will not, not be altered and surface water diversion structures are being considered for the buttress signal of the slip. Ray, Larry?
No.
And Bellmeyer?
No.
Very gossip?
No.
Cindy Ray?
Yes.
And the last one?
Yes.
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 So once again, with, you know, what was discussed in the previous meeting, um also with the, what would need to be built, and then the requirements for the engineering construction are, or the approach on that, it needs to um address these water runoffs.
Ray, Ray, but you guys. What's his? Well, just a follow-up on your.
Water runoff, I mean, that's gonna be a huge problem when you dig into that hill. That's my reason.
There, there's a reason why they set that toe of the bluff, you know, so you don't dig into it. You know?
Number five, the soil conditions are adequate to accommodate the proposed use. Staff analysis, a geotechnical evaluation of the slope is being required in the subject system will require a mound system for treatment, engineering measures are being required for the site's soil conditions. Ray?
You gotta say that one.
Wayne?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Um, yes.
Move.
Yes.
Yes.
Number six, that potential pollution hazards have been addressed and the standards have been staff analysis, compliance septic system will be operated in the applicant has removed substantial amounts of of potential pollution, right?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Cindy Ray?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Number seven, an inadequate utilities access road drainage and other necessary facility have been or are being provided. Staff analysis, some utilities exist and others like the septic system will be upgraded. Additionally, service water management will be addressed in the geotechnical report for the source. Right?
I vote no on that one due to the fact that it's could be in a flood zone.
Wayne?
No. If it's in flood zone, that's what I'll say.
No.
Cindy?
Yes.
And the last one?
Yes.
Cindy Ray?
Yes.
Josh. You're right, like, is it in flood zone? Um, no.
Two thousand thirteen, there was one.
The designation that exists in the program. First chill. Number eight, that adequate.
We skip.
Step nine, step.
Ten.
Number ten, that the conditional use will not be injurious to the use enjoyment of other property in the weed vicinity for the purposes already permitted. Staff analysis, this is a replacement for existing use, right?
I vote no, and my reason is for the water running down into a neighbor's place. It's very close, there's not much from there.
Oh, yes, for that.
Yes, Larry?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
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 Number eleven, that the establishment of the conditional use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for predominant uses in the area. Staff analysis, as noted above, this is a replacement for existing use, only one structure will be in the roundness. Other existing structures have been. Right?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Yes. Um, yes.
Twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen?
That site's specific conditions and such other conditions are established, they're required for the protection of the public's health, safety, morals and general welfare, staff analysis, public health, safety, morals and general welfare not statistically impacted. Right?
I have to go with no on that one, I think there's a lot of potential flooding and having trouble there with the neighbors.
Wayne?
No.
There is.
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. I'll make a motion, accept the finding.
Okay, good.
Agreed. All those, well, do you wanna roll call on that?
Sure. So. Everyone passed, these four to three, except number one.
Yes. Yes.
I also have to vote on number one again before we finalize it. See if that works. Considering the other fourteen findings of other, all passed.
Is there?
Yes, we can. You opened up once, right, it's the first time it passed, for sure, five one. You opened up, yeah. Didn't have to be four, but every time it passed, except the one that's the whole general. Which is essentially, can you build a house? How do you talk about it? I mean, I had here the secretary. I'm not supposed to do it all.
You know, if anybody has any changes to what their reconsideration of that, we can certainly do it, I would do it. Um, just to.
We did it twice, and the first time it wasn't by roll call, the second time it was by roll.
You think first time it passed? It, it was. Oh, boy. It passed a hundred percent, you know it.
Yeah.
Right? Then we went back, did a roll call, somehow votes came in fifteen seconds. Then we went through every finding, number one being the broadest or general finding, nothing really specific to say yes or don't do. All the other findings passed. Nobody voted against, grouped and voted against the specific thing. That was, yeah. And it's one to one, it's like whether it's allowable.
I think there was a couple of dissensions on the first time around, but the definitely there was four to three on the second one, so let's do the roll call on it again. Ended up.
Okay.
Three times, uh, two out of three.
So, Division One findings, planning, management shall not recommend the conditional use for this unless they find the following, number one, if the proposed use conforms to the county management. Staff analysis, single-family non-farm dwelling that additionally is allowed in the agricultural protection district. This protects agricultural interests, which is a goal of comprehensive. Right?
I vote no, my reason for no is we're not staying with our ordinances, I mean, we have ordinances, we don't follow them, why do we have? It's in our ordinance that they cannot dig out through that hill. So I'm sorry, but it's in our. Sorry, that's it.
I vote no too. It is an ordinance, and we've made ordinances to keep this stuff right.
Larry?
No. Same agreement, that's with the ordinances.
Cindy?
Yes.
John?
I still don't.
I'll say yes, that's why we have more, uh, other variances.
That is specific, but.
Now we know. We're going on to, we had a uh motion and a second. On accepting the findings. So we wanna do a roll call vote on that?
True. Ray?
Yes. We'll call it.
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Um, yes.
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 Okay. Motion passes. And now, um, we also have, um, moving on to the actual approval or not of this, so do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we deny this due to the fact that they're not following our ordinance.
In, in Minnesota statute, without the finding, we that say you have to these criteria, and when it says, he, it means all. There's some. Well, I mean. Terms of.
Well, in November. In November, the, yeah, the of block country. Well, once again, this goes to the county board, so our written recommendations will be four to three on that first one, that, you know, no. And then, but the rest of them, they need to read through, and it's their decision. Right?
Yeah, it's county board, it's gonna be county board's decision.
The, the thing about it is, is if you make the recommendation of the procedures, then your actions are indispensable.
Yeah.
So in other words, what you give to them, they can't dispute what you gave to them.
That's why the comments are important. I believe that's why the comments are important too. To just give them some background on why, you know, why someone.
That's why we didn't, we didn't say why.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Good. Okay, so you did not recommend approval of this, we have a second?
Awesome, well, I said I made the motion.
I was.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Roll call, Wayne?
Oh.
Great.
All right. Let me say, um, you know.
Sorry, Wayne?
Deny.
Good night.
Larry?
Good night.
Night.
Good night.
Good night.
Four to three. Four to three. I was just going to say, so this um was a sort of a decision um that we are reporting here, um, and so that was that I was just going to say, so this, um, was sort of the decision, um, that we are reporting here, um, and so that was that. Was approved. Um, approved as denying that, okay, so, um, then this is what goes forward to the county.
See, the county commissioners can override us.
Yeah.
That's all right, they want to, they're the ones gonna take the risk. You know?
Mm-hmm. The.
And if they deny it, and just let it go through, that means they don't care about our ordinances. You know? That's the sad part about it, they put those ordinances in place. We're following them.
Mm-hmm.
They're denying.
Okay.
I will, absolutely.
Yes.
Yep, there's a lot of.
I think obviously well. First time it was tabled by the board of directors.
I think what happened was.
That and roll call. Different pressure.
Different pressure and persuasion. Sure.
Yeah. It's, um, so that is June fourth meeting, is that right? No? No, not in May. Are they done for me? Uh, that will be next, that will be next, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you. We good? Any?
All right, let's.
We're not.
Don't forget.
So, this one.
I got some stuff.
Okay. Okay.
So we can't, can't.
Oh.
This is some.
Yeah.
Oh, you guys.
This was included in the patent, right, this part?
So.
Yeah. I think. If it's in here, I just. I don't know about the rest of it. Oh, these are my comments. I, I thought that was familiar. Okay.
We leave that for us?
Yes, please.
All right, notice a public hearing, please take notice that an application has been made. By Zinke on behalf of Spiker families, located across thirteen twenty, or Bana, Nambu, South Oklahoma. Seven four one one two for a condition of use permit, section twenty four point two subdivision one subsection one, induced them. Some president. On the bottom, that's due to part of the North Coast border, western Texas, or any section, well, township one oh four, arranged by Houston County, Minnesota. Council zero eight zero three two five zero zero zero, set up and standing with the application, our is owner and set in stride. During on this application will be held in the. Region will city of Caladon, Minnesota, it's in here on Thursday, May twenty third, twenty twenty four. All persons having an interest in the matter will be given the opportunity to submit comments relative to the granting or the time of set application. Comments should be mailed to the environment services department, three oh four South Manchester Street, Minnesota. Drive five minute two one, or email through Martin Alvera, L C O dot. Dot M N dot U S, must be received by Tuesday, May fourteenth, twenty twenty four. Comments in regards to petition received by this date would be part of public record and will be made available for review by the planning commission prior to the meeting. Houston County Planning Commission by Martin Alvera, Sony Administration.
Okay. So, um, then you mentioned, okay, you wanna talk about initially the complaint was received, and you wanna go into that?
Sure. I. Land operation. So I went out to the site, looked at it, did a rough calculation of it, contacted Dave Walter. From zero, uh, soil and water, he went out and. Generated a number that was greater than the five thousand feet yards. The only thing that. If it. Can be filled in in this is that. You know, since then, I've heard. From Zankis that they felt their understanding, at least, and you can feel free to chime in on.
If you, if you want, if you wanted to, I could just introduce, I'm Travis Zinke, Zinke Incorporated to work.
Yeah.
And this is Keith and Denise, uh, Spiker, the property owners from Oklahoma, and they contracted us to do the work. And so I just wanted to introduce some, Keith, can you run that?
Well, okay, yeah, uh, and then, uh. In talking with. Travis that. They felt that the soil. That they relocated for that did not count by in the calculation. But. The definition is alteration, so if you're playing with it and putting it back, it's still. Alteration is, is all encompassing in its definition. As far as.
So the, the thing I had to say about that is, there was a lot of topsoil. And we saved all the topsoil, we brought it back to the top, you know, and, but we moved the clay, I guess that's why it looked like we moved. Well, I guess we did move more. Than the five thousand yards after doing the, the calculation with Dave Walters. But that was the reason why, because, you know, the. Where the road is located with the hillside, the topsoil migrates down, and we saved all of it, put it back to the top. And, you know, that, that's the way I was always taught to do it, and, and, and there was some deep areas, there was probably some areas over two feet. Of topsoil that we did move, you know? Um, and then we spread it back up on the shoulders of the road and also, uh. I'm sure, I don't know if there was any pictures during the work, but a lot of it was put back up in, uh, the field, which is, uh, still far.
Soil and water, they assisted you in this and all, and helping you out with all of this roadwork?
You mean after the fact?
No.
Or after the fact, or before?
Yeah, it was, was.
But who contacted Soil and Water to get him involved? You did?
I did.
Okay.
When was this work done?
Uh, was it February, March, someplace, or the end of February, beginning of March, somewhere?
Wonderful winter.
What's that?
A wonderful winter.
It was nice weather, that's kinda like, we'll give you a ticket manage of it. I, I think I have some pictures of it, and lots of, but. I mean, during the construction.
So you started just basically a dirt track back, the buildings are currently there and built up along ways that was sufficient for a house at some point.
That's similar part, the only. How do we say it, the only area that is buildable on the property, cause of the restrictions of the ordinance.
They, they're caught in the quarter quarter rule.
Well, they need the driveway to get back to the builder house, right?
Right. So if that's come before the fact, this wouldn't have been an issue with.
They would have still needed. Still have the alteration.
Correct. Yeah, but what they did wasn't out of the ornament.
No, I mean, their, their construction and their techniques were flawed.
The road looks good.
Yeah.
Let me disclose that I am an adjacent neighbor, I'm a landowner to this, um, these two parcels that the road went through, it's a great road, it looks great. But I think what happened is when, uh, passersby were seeing a long lane go through farmland, cause previously, this has been land that's been ag land only. Um, they were concerned, is this a development? You know, that nobody knows about, um, there was no permits applied for, for a road, so, um, so it was all after the fact, the road was completed. Um, and I think that in my neighbors, I'm one of the ten that received, um, the information on this, um, you know, had a lot of questions. And, um, I, uh, pointed them in Marty's direction, um, and to call him about this, once it was clarified what this was for. Because, um, quite honestly, I don't think anybody really knew that there was any buildings back there, I've never seen a permit or anything for a building in the back of that second parcel.
Well, there is a portable storage building back.
There's, so.
Yeah. Sounds good.
So it's not like a big barn or anything?
They, they would land in, not eat.
Mm-hmm.
For their yard.
They, they saw the arm.
And so as far as that goes, they.
So one of the main concerns was, is what is the road?
Anytime we're down on the ground, and this is lower land, you need a permit to move over a hundred yards.
Well, actually, in the, in the, in the district, blue or not, it's five thousand.
Yeah. That's where.
Yeah.
The slopes are low.
Yeah.
That's a key point, gotta be. Most of this is fairly low, I mean, it's not.
Yeah, but it looks low.
But it, but it, it's not a high pitch, you get either higher up in the thing, pitch goes up quite a bit.
Yeah.
Well, you had soil and water involved, and they were down there then.
Yeah. We verified the, the, the volume.
So all the standards were okay with the soil and water, with the way they built the driveway and everything?
They put a couple culverts in and seeded, and I went up, took some pictures yesterday, but most of it's catching.
So, um, you know, back to the, um, one of the main concerns was whether or not it was gonna be a development, cause it could certainly look like that from the rear. But, um, the other thing is that there wasn't any requests beforehand, so going forward is a concern for neighbors in that area, um. To know that, or to be assured that something else isn't going to happen, um, without a permit or, you know, anything else, um, without, um, knowledge, um, by the county.
That was brought up to me by people in the press too. They, they were wondering if permit process is all done here.
No.
No.
Yeah.
They needed building permit. And I, I just acted stupid, because I act stupid pretty good, and I didn't know about this.
I'm also a property owner to the, just a joint property to the west.
Well, do you need to have a C U P to move dirt? I mean, they're not building.
That's why.
Yeah, that's why they, you gotta use the state.
You, you, they still could get C U P, and that's what we're doing. We're sort of looking at two issues in Sydney. One is the, the whole idea of the after the fact part, that we have. A triple P, and then it's to do a conditional use prep permit for substantial redevelopment. And I mean, in this case, it is done. I have no objections to it, my understanding is they, Walters doesn't have any objection. So in terms of, they met the requirements of, it's, it's purely a case of. You know? Do you disagree with the after the fact part, and are you good with issuing a C U P, or do you want to tear it out and start over and then put it back in? Okay.
I, I guess, I guess, you know, to, to my point here on, on the road to do a quality job. We could have do it, we could have done it with less than five thousand parts, but you wouldn't have the quality job that you, that you have, you know, for snow, for access, um, for. A gentle grade going into the, you know?
You did it right.
Yeah, that's what we.
Well, I can see.
We, we tried to do it right, you know? Um, within, and, you know, to get the, the fact of, you know, Dave Walters looking at different, you know, um. With the conservation office, we worked through a lot of them issues, uh, in the old seven flood, we worked for the county, all over the county during old seven flood. So I guess what I'm trying to say is. Engineers know a lot of stuff. I've been doing it forty years, you learn a lot of stuff. If, if you, if you don't, you're not in this for years. I made a mistake here by moving too much dirt, and I'm sorry for that. Um, but I guess we just have to try to move forward and, uh, learn from our mistakes, I guess, I didn't. I.
Are you planning on making a housing development out of this?
No, it's just one resident.
Down the road, you know, five, ten years down the road.
Well, that's, that's the owners of the property, we, we will say here that we have no intentions, well, well, we are the owners of record of. Of doing anything other than one single family home at some, at some point, at some point in time, yes.
Just gave you here, explain that, well.
That makes sense.
So if this activity happening, it was like that, the roof of their house. Uh, the driveway is covered under the road, so that happened.
Yes.
Yeah, so the reason we're here is right now is because it happened in.
They'd filed for their permit for their house, it would have been already involved.
Right.
Rolled right in.
Which it's.
There's homeworks put in here, haven't there? Yeah, in our township, we always put the first culvert in, Larry.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, just, I know.
Until the township would have been contact. You know? And the township would have known it was gonna be a road put in. And then it would have been done right. Well, we didn't, uh, we didn't change the access from the county road.
Yeah, you're fired.
Yeah, we, we started.
It's still.
Cemetery.
Yeah, probably what, three hundred feet or four hundred feet back, that's on our county road, before we started to work.
Mm-hmm.
Well, do we have findings on this, or what do we, how do we vote on this?
Yeah, it's a, it's a real.
Yep. Go through, um. If there's nothing further, other clarification, I think if you read.
And you don't realize, Houston, you know, we've got Google's up there and, and he put a building up and. It's gonna put, you know, residents in it and everything, without a permit too. So. But the permit process is an important part of.
Yes, I think that's where, you know, we came back to when people were seeing this go in, it's like, what's going on there? They, they also had, you know, been aware, the same neighborhood had been aware of a potential development on Pine Creek, so less than a mile away.
What people were worried about when they contacted me, was they thought there was another housing development.
Yes.
You know, that's, that's what they were worried about.
Right.
You know?
So, you know, and like I said, the second thing is just, um, the awareness that, uh, you know, things need to be vetted through. Um, prior to, um, actually starting, um, the process, but it's next time. Um, cause if, you know, this will obviously come up again when you're ready to build or wanna do that, and then, um. You know, as we said, a lot of times, this is worked in, that road access or the access to it is worked into that, um, conditional use permit.
It's contract the office.
Yeah. So, let's go through the findings.
So the C U P we're gonna issue tonight is just for the road, not for house?
Correct.
It's.
Yes. Good question.
Maybe we'll need to strike eight, I.
I think it's.
It's well done.
Second half.
I think it's, it'd be passed.
Okay, can we just? Eh, yeah, let's just take a motion on each one, have an evolve call, is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
On this one?
Okay. Okay, subdivision one finding, planning commission shall not recommend the condition used for this permit unless they find the following, number one, if the code used conforms to the county land use plan. Staff analysis, goal two point three of the comprehensive land use plan references protection of natural resources, fine for land operation permit, checks natural resources.
Okay, all those in favor, please say hi.
Hi.
Okay, moving on.
Number two, that the applicant demonstrates a need for the proposed use, the roadway is needed for future dwelling and demonstrates a need for use.
I do. Staff analysis.
Or no, I did.
You did?
Yeah.
Okay, it's basically restating the same thing too. Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Three.
Number three, that the proposed use will not degrade the water quality of the county, staff analysis with proper control of surface water runoff and establishing vegetation on the slopes. The sediment load to water bodies should be reduced.
All those in favor? Say hi.
I do.
Any opposed?
Can I make a motion to take number findings eight, nine?
We already did that.
We did, we did twelve, we took them all, okay.
Okay.
Number four. That the proposed use will not adversely increase quantity of water runoff. Staff analysis, the concentrated water is routed through culvert, controlling the surface water, eliciting.
All those in favor? Say aye.
Hi.
Any opposed?
Number five, that soil conditions are adequate to accommodate proposed use, staff analysis, soil is adequate to support vegetation.
All those in favor, finding?
Hi.
Alright.
Any opposed?
Number six, that potential pollution hazards have been addressed and standards have been, staff analysis, soil erosion measures will be presumed.
All those in favor? Please say aye.
Hi.
Any opposed?
Number seven, that adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. Staff analysis, culvert is being placed through direct surface water and dissipating.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Hi.
Any opposed?
Not what will, I'm not, what will.
Yeah.
Ten, that the conditional use will not be dangerous to the use and enjoyment of other property to include the vicinity for purposes already permitted. Staff analysis, with vegetation reestablished and good surface water routed in parcel or system. Staff analysis, with vegetation reestablished and good surface water routing, the parcel will assist down street parcels in managing surface water runoff.
All those in favor? Any opposed?
Number eleven, that the establishment of the conditional use will not repeat the normal orderly development improvement of surrounding vacant property. For predominant uses in the area, staff analysis, providing stabilized roadway and routing surface water through culvert is an improvement for future dwell.
All those in favor? Any opposed?
Will cite specific conditions and subject to condition where it's. The public's health, safety, morals and general welfare. Staff analysis, public health, safety, morals and general welfare are not anticipated.
All those in favor? Please say aye. Any opposed? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve some findings.
Okay.
Second.
Want a roll call on that?
Yes.
Really?
No.
There you go.
Yes.
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 Yeah, yes.
Yes, it's like a beautiful place that built out of the base if you ever wanna sell it. Been back in there years ago and actually that driveway is the best that Dallas ever done. It's, it should have been done a long time ago. Should have been done with permit.
I don't think you tried to pull up behind our backs.
Recommendation, planning commission must consider the criteria about should the permit be granted, staff recommend the required following conditions. Number one. The permit shall comply with all federal, state, local laws and regulations. Is in compliance with the conditions and all of the requirements staff give you in ordinance. Proposed motion is to recommend approval of the mission is prepared for a sample law, land operation.
I'll make a motion to approve this C U P.
Judge. Any opposed? Oh wait, actually, all those in favor? Please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
So was there a seven hundred fifty dollar or the triple on the five on this?
Yes, um.
I would like to make a motion that we refund them.
Basically, you know, it's, it's really up to you. What we've done in the past is certainly given consideration of what the ordinance says. Is it says, but we have. Not a situation where we.
I mean, they called you once they figured it out. I mean, they weren't trying to do this behind anybody's back.
It's, it's up to you guys.
I mean, I just think it's stupid to charge an extra fourteen hundred dollars.
To, there's, wasn't a refund though.
Well, I think that's.
It was a regular fee, right?
Regular fee is seven fifty.
You did the.
Yeah.
Why don't we put it in there that if they ever sell part of that land off, that they gotta pay the fee? In the next thirty years?
So.
I made a motion to waive the fee or to return the fee.
To refund the.
Refund the.
Based on. Anything?
It's.
I mean, they're doing a, they made a better road out of it. I mean, they're not hiding nothing. They don't try to build a basement or anything like that. I mean.
Yeah, I think like I said, the thing moving forward, you know, to just not all of a sudden have a house pop up. I don't think they're ever gonna intend on doing that.
I would like to say that's not the way we operate.
The learning experience.
Learning experience.
County to county, state to state, very different. Absolutely. Okay, we have a motion and a second circum. All those in favor? Any opposed? No, one no. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you all, thank you guys. My god.
Okay.
You just wanna get all the.
Yeah, Lord, thanks for meeting.
So we're moving ahead. Johnston, right?
Yeah. Well, I'm Karen Johnston, junior.
Okay. Yep.
At least they've noticed that an application has been made by. Seventeen one eighty-six, coming twenty-six, Houston, Minnesota, five five nine three G for a conditional use permit. Section fourteen point three, sub eighteen twenty-five, in Golden Creek, county bound along from Siskiyou, that's part of the southern map. Southeast quarter, section seven, county bound along range six, Houston County, Minnesota, car park. Ten zero three, zero three, zero zero one, said African standing making application. For the speed owner of said described room, it's a very nice application, will be available to Houston County, Houston Room. City of Calhoun, Minnesota, at seventeen on Thursday, May twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. All persons having an interest in the night will be given the opportunity to say comments relative to the grant or deny in a set application. Comments should be mailed to the environmental services department through your force on Manchester Street, Calhoun, Minnesota, five five nine two one, or emailed to. But be received by Tuesday, May fourteen, twenty twenty-four. Comments in regard to the petition received by the state will be part of the public record, will be made available for review by the planning commission prior to the meeting. Houston County Planning Commission by Martin Herring, zoning administration.
Okay, welcome. So you want to describe this? Martin, do you wanna talk about it? Would you like to?
It's a conditional use permit for a wedding venue, I guess would be the best way to describe it. Um, yeah, if you guys.
Getting more of an event space, um, it's not gonna be just for weddings.
Birthday parties, uh, family gatherings.
Graduations, retirement parties, um, birthday party.
Is it you that care getting married or kid?
What's that?
It's you or him getting married.
I already got married. Yeah. Basically just a space for people to gather and spend time with family friends.
Capacity.
Capacity, um, I've got a forty by eighty full shed standing. Got a, an eighty foot addition, um. For, it's fourteen by eighty for bathrooms. And a maintenance, uh, mechanical room, um. The capacity is, I'm looking for a hundred, but. I will probably need a fire marshal to sign off on that. Um, so at the time being, going with a hundred.
Do you know anything about that Martin, it's fire marshal?
Well, clients, if you, the managing number. When you get into what the public, what's the right term? Yeah, that you, you get into a different standard and you start to get involved with commerce agency, things go on that. And it gets. There's the definition of seating, convertible seating and some of these other things that go along with it, you know, like some people. Trying to build, they call it a church and it's not really a church and there, you know, so there's, but the magic number is about true. With that, with that. Requirements in terms of like some of the other building code, we actually are not enforcing. When you get into the public commerce part, we're, we're not the agency that does.
Like handicap accessible.
But ADA to a certain extent, there, there would be that in terms of like the ramps and stuff like that. You, you certainly will have that in the, in the public part. Your hand railings, we have a certain kind of width of the doors, lever locks, uh, access for bathrooms. A lot of those parking spaces. We do have some of those too, and signage.
So this parcel had a recent zoning permit, is that right?
With the addition on the existing forty by eight.
Okay, so that hasn't been constructed.
It's in the process of being built.
Well, we got a forty by eighty and you're putting a fourteen by what?
Fourteen by eighty.
You're making your dad do all the work, aren't you?
I wish. Yeah, in a roundabout way, um, part of it on the front of the shed is more open, like a, a porch style.
So this is in the, um, egg protection district, right? So, um, it doesn't look like much is changing with that, cause there's a current building there. Is that correct or tell me about that?
Just the. The revisions are mainly. More so than anything, it's just that.
Okay.
That you're, I mean, it's a different use.
Yes.
That's certainly a we, we didn't catch this because of use, but like bathrooms. I don't think you're doing any cooking, are you?
No.
So that's a biggie right there.
They're just all drinking there.
And parking facility that's being accounted for off road and, yeah.
There's an acre and a half for parking, um. Pretty much completely flat, um, there's no alteration to the driveway. There's plenty of room for handicap spots. Uh, it's all gonna be one level, handicap accessible, basically drive right up. Uh, drop off anyone that, uh, needs to be dropped off and then, um, the rest of, you know. Parking can be done adjacent to the building.
So are you gonna build like a parking lot out there or?
It's a.
Just a field right now.
It's a hayfield, yeah, um, so. That's the plan. Yeah.
I mean, it's a rural setting, so it probably gonna look rustic around that.
And the hayfield is so small, it's. The equipment now, you can't get turned around in it, so if you're worried about taking ag out of ag, you would sit.
I'm just wondering where the water's gonna run when you pitch the parking lot, cause you own one side but not the other.
So it naturally slopes, um, already towards the, uh, property line.
But right now it's filtration. Whereas if the parking lot is gonna look.
Right, when I say.
Turn a muddle and, you know, your neighbors.
Right, when I say parking lot, I'm not talking like a whole page, you know, acre and a half, uh, it's more.
Like when you go to an apple orchard, like Ferguson's, it's parking like that.
It may, you know, that's a pretty big cost, so it may stay. Hayfield. Yeah, moment low, um, and you know, in big rain events, whatever, um. I'll have to make, um, adjustments and, um, boss people in or. Do that all.
Yeah, it would look weird if it was too urban around there and you plant your hardscapes.
There is. No, it's vacant.
Is that part of this property?
It is.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Yes.
And septic, we gotta put in for something like that.
Yeah, um, so Chance Nelson, um, he's, he's got a plan written up. Um, I believe it's at the back of my packet that, uh, um, it's a six thousand gallon total. Uh, holding tank system, so it's two, three thousand gallon tanks, which is way oversized, but. I don't want to have to pump a thing, you know, once a month and. Chase Munson, uh, anyone pumping, he now has a six thousand gallon pumper. Uh, so if I can just put in a bigger system now, now I have to worry about it. You know, buy now, cry now kinda guy, so.
So is it not the two, three thousand?
Yes, two, three thousand gallons.
Yeah.
The important question we should ask is, who are you gonna marry?
Okay, moving on.
The one that's got all the money.
Hopefully, I think they're planning a more than one marriage. That's a lot of work for one of us. Okay, um, no visibility issues as far as traffic, but they can, you said something about, um, the cyclical nature. Okay, so you're not probably gonna.
Right.
Yeah.
And in that kind of ties septic system too, since that.
Yeah.
Because septic systems are figured on gallons, okay? So it's not. But when you go to like the S S T, it's code, it's gonna say events, they're not gonna look at. Where are going with this? You are building more large. Your system.
And most of his business is probably gonna be come Friday through Sunday.
Yep.
You know, that, bet you got the house is all rented out already. You will.
Okay, anything else that you wanna talk about or go forward?
What man you have there? God, think we're gonna crash it?
No, I think that it'll be a good thing for the community, you know, I'm just trying to keep everything, um, reasonably priced and, um. Do my best to, you know, make a nice, pretty spot to come and hang out. Family oriented, uh, wanna have a decent sized playground for the kids and. Nice, nice spot to relax.
What's your timeline for this?
Um.
You hope to be operational.
I'd like to see it operational, um, by. Over November, I mean. Be great, you know.
I think you're gonna be very busy. Nobody runs, uh, Bittersweet over in La Crosse and they have. Probably not quite as big as yours and they can hold a hundred and fifty some people, so you'll probably be at the two fifty range of your size of your building.
Okay.
And, uh.
He's already got apartments where they could stay at.
Yeah, I mean, she has a house right there, just like they do, and they rent that house out every weekend to wedding parties.
That's called Bittersweet.
Yeah, she's got a hundred and thirty-six weddings this summer.
Really?
And she's booked a hundred and twenty-eight for twenty-five. Well, good luck. I wish you can look at her like she does.
Thank you, yeah.
If nothing further, any public comments? Okay, gonna talk a couple findings down there.
So the reason one, but the planning, planning commission. Staff analysis goal one point four, the Houston County Comprehensive Land Use Plan notes. Implementing economic development strategies that reflect local values and supports.
All those in favor of that finding, let's say aye. Any post?
Number two, that the applicant demonstrates a proposed use, that knows that they are targeting reasonable costs for their venue.
All those in favor of that finding, please say aye. Any post?
Staff analysis, the venue will have a properly sized septic system of approximately six thousand gallons, which will not degrade the water quality of this.
Uh drinking any water, right?
All those in favor, please say aye. Any posts?
Number four, that the proposed use will not adversely increase the quantity of water runoff, staff notices. Quantity of water runoff will not increases the motivation to the existing structure will not substantially increase the sites and permeable service area. This does not restrict infiltration.
All those in favor of that finding, say aye. Post?
Number five, that soil conditions are adequate to accommodate the proposed use. The outside slows and inadequate drainage and strength characteristics support the venue.
All those in favor, please say aye. Post?
We sense that the potential pollution hazards have been addressed and the standards have been meshed. Staff notes, technical nature of the venue and network security facility will limit the pollution.
All those in favor, say aye. Post?
Number seven, that adequate utilities, access roads, drainage and other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. Staff analysis, plans for parking septic systems as well as ADA requirements will be.
All those in favor, let's say aye. Any opposed?
Number eight, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide sufficient off-preparating loading space to serve the proposed use. Staff analysis, plan for adequate off-preparating parking has been included with the application.
All those in favor, aye? Any opposed?
Number nine, that facilities are provided to eliminate the traffic congestion or traffic hazard which may result from the proposed use. Staff analysis, enough areas available to control any traffic.
All those in favor? Sorry, I'm changing my approach and you're. Any opposed?
Right, number ten, that conditional use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity. For the purposes already permitted, staff analysis, trees are proposed to reduce the new shade of the venue from county one six. The closest neighboring residence is greater than seven hundred feet away from the venue, with vegetation maintained and adequate surface rock, water routing. Venue will have minimal impact on the surrounding properties.
I have a question about that one, when we say trees are proposed, is that we're not, you're proposing that in your plan? But it's not required.
It is not necessarily, no.
Okay. I'm just curious.
There will be trees, yeah.
You know, if you if you approve it, realize we adopt their proposal so that they are.
Right, got it, that makes sense. Mm-hmm, okay, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Eleven, that the establishment of a conditional use will not impede the normal and orderly development improvement of surrounding vacant property. For predominant uses in the area, staff analysis, the venue is repurposing and existing structure will not impede development in the area.
All those in favor? Any opposed?
Number twelve, adequate measures have been, will be taken to prevent or control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise and migration so that none of these will constitute abuses. Then to control light, sign and other lights, in such a manner that no disturbance neighboring properties will result. Staff analysis, trees are proposed to reduce the new shade of the venue.
All those in favor? Any opposed?
I'll make a motion to skip number thirteen and number fourteen as they are not applicable.
Okay, moving on.
Number fifteen, that site specific conditions and such. Site specific conditions and such other conditions are established as required for the protection of the public's health, safety, morals and general welfare, staff announced. Public health, safety, morals and general welfare are not anticipated to be in.
All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? I do have one comment, did we have any comments from neighbors or anybody, did we talk about that?
One, this one. Phil Nissan.
Hey, he invited us to him.
That's actually Phil Nissan's old bar.
Oh.
Really?
I'm excited to see what.
Yes.
Should we take a roll call on that one?
Great.
Yes.
Yes.
Very, yes.
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 Yeah, yes.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
I'll make a motion to permit the new venue.
Okay. For the cup? Yes, why don't you read through that?
Planning mission must consider the criteria, but should the permit be granted, staff recommend following. Recommend requiring file, number one, many shall comply with all federal, state. Local laws and regulations, number two, the company management premises. And all other applicable statutes, rules and warrants, number three, applicable measures outlined in the business plan shall be.
Hey Greg, is that your motion?
Please approve.
Josh seconded.
Yep.
Hey, wanna do a roll call on that one too?
Great.
Yes.
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 Yeah, yes.
Listen, you're telling your turn.
Okay. Recommendation of food.
Thank you.
June fourth.
Uh we should give him some advice.
Marriage advice again? Put that in a minute.
So you're doing all the work yourself?
Yeah, thank you.
Excited to see it. What, do you have a name for it?
The name that we would like to go with um is Creekside Events. So. Yeah, thank you guys, appreciate it, thanks.
So we have to discuss tonight before we. I've already had a plan for this, so. Hard response.
Alright, I'm ready for you.
Notice the public hearing, please take notice that an application was made by, been made by Wayne Feldmeyer. Five five nine four three for a conditional use permit, section fourteen point three subdivision one, subsection five of Houston Township. And the following premises, who it questioned after weapon, that Southwest border section thirty-five. Township one four one seven Houston County Minnesota, parcel zero six, zero three seven one zero zero zero. Set up and standing making application R S P owner that sent the start land. The hearing on this application will be held at the U C County Michigan City of California Minnesota and September, July, and Thursday, November twenty-four. All persons having an interest in the matter will be given the opportunity to make a comment relative to the grant or denying said application. Package should be mailed through the Land Services Department through a four south commercial street, California Minnesota five five nine two one, or email to mark dot Eric at C O. At Houston, Minnesota, U S, must be received by Tuesday, May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Comments in regard to petition received by the state will be part of the public record, will be made available for review by the planning commission prior to the meeting. Houston County Planning Commission by Mark Eric zoning administration.
Okay.
Fire away, guys.
Well, why don't you tell us?
I'm gonna put a cabin in. And for that wedding couple.
So no.
Yeah.
So this is a a larger one than you have, right?
No, it's just a small cabin, it's under two hundred square, uh it's under. No, I'm sorry.
You're, you're in water lane?
What?
You're gonna have water and sewer?
No. Just cabin.
Access office sixteen?
It doesn't even have a toilet. You know, I haven't even thought about a toilet.
That's alright, I mean, I'm just not paying attention.
No.
Access is office sixteen?
Yep.
Is this close to this wedding venue or something that you're?
Well, I figured if they got married, you'd have to have boys stay the first night.
So wait, not stick built on site, log by log?
No, it's it's built, the Amish are gonna build it and they're gonna bring it down on a truck and just set it there. And I have to get a slab, a ground and I have to pour, oh what, ten yards of rock. And then they set it on the rock.
Okay. So this is not, isn't it our four hundred square?
Comes in, the guy that that'll bring it, he's got a big trailer just made for it. And he just brings it in and shoots it right off. But it's gotta be a level spot. It may be get at a laser level, you know.
Does that, is there a deck, does it extend or is that all square footage? Where's your, gonna be your chair, the outside?
Well, well. We'll worry about that later.
Okay, so less than four hundred square feet.
Yep. This is a little lofted. Stairs.
Closest dwelling, hundred and fifty feet away.
That close to dwelling, that's um Ronnie Longies.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Driveway right in Mount Longies there.
Right.
It's an excellent deer hunting spot. And everybody that I've told about it, they come by and they they say that that they're gonna come deer hunting there.
I know, I get one.
Yeah, right there. See, it's it's a good deer hunting spot.
Yeah, turn a B and B though.
No.
Well, I, we already had that discussion earlier time.
Except for deer. Let them in. Okay. Uh any comments from? Feedback on this?
One neighbor, Troy.
Bartel.
Bartel, he said he had an object.
Nope, I talked to him, I often sell him land, you wanted, you wanted a dirt cheap son, I thought, well. I put a cabinet up there, it's alright. He was okay with the cabinet up there.
He said he didn't know it yet.
No, well, he hunts it too, you know.
Anybody else have anything we can poison on, tough ones, questions?
My wife took photos of them. She does, my wife's got an electric car today.
Oh, cool. Good for her.
God knows where she is now.
Hopefully she's charged.
As long as you have divorce papers in the mail, you'll be fine.
Alright, move on to finding.
Yes, the planning mission shall not recommend the condition used unless they find the following.
Yeah, let's get rid of those. Ten, fourteen, all those. Approval, please say aye.
Aye.
We're good.
Planic mission shall not recommend a conditional use permit unless they find the following, those use can force the common use. Cabs are conditionally allowed in the big district, this protects public voter interest, which is a primary goal of comprehensive lens.
Okay, all those in favor, aye? Okay, any posts?
Number two, that the applicant demonstrates a need for the proposed use, and that implements the cabinets for recreational purposes. This demonstrates a need.
All those in favor of the motion, aye? Any opposed?
Three, that the proposed use will not degrade the water quality of the county, staff analysis cabin will not have water supply. Or septic system will have minimal impact.
All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Number four, that the proposed use will not adversely increase the quantity of water. Staff analysis, cabin footprint is minimal and will not substantially influence the quantity of water.
All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Number five, and soil conditions are adequate to accommodate proposed use. Soil survey in the case of finite soil not being built on cabin will conform to the natural soil from the land, septic system will not be installed. So soil permeability, uh major considerations.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Number six, that potential pollution hazards have been addressed and the standards have been met, staff notices there are no anticipated pollution.
All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Number seven, inadequate utilities, access roads, drainage and other necessary facility cabin are being provided. Staff analysis, no modern amenities will be installed with the cabin and access is from highway sixteen.
All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Not applicable, mine not applicable. Number ten, that the conventional use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes. Already committed, staff notices, there is one neighbor which is approximately six hundred and fifty feet from the proposed cabin, the condition of a limited use cabin. It's not anticipated to negatively affect the use of the living property.
All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Number eleven, that the establishment of a condition of use will not impede the normal and vertically development improvement of surrounding vacant property for predominant uses in the area. Staff analysis, the predominant land use is agriculture and chores, the congluculation of which will not be impacted by the cabin. Part of the area continues to be total acreage woodland, the cabin should not impact neighboring landowners ability to use their properties for existing uses.
All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Number fifteen, in site specific conditions and such other conditions are established and required for protection of the public health, safety, moral and general welfare. Staff analysis, public health, safety, moral and general welfare are not anticipated to be.
All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
I'll make a motion to accept the findings.
Great, great, wait a second, Jonathan? Do a roll call on that?
Great, great.
Yes.
You're abstaining?
I gotta abstain.
Yeah, you should.
Yes.
Yes. Potato, you didn't do it. Okay, motion carries. All done, okay, how about to uh to make a motion to approve that thing you paid?
Planning mission must consider the criteria, but should the permit be granted, staff recommend following, required, requiring following conditions, one, permitted shot by all federal state. Overlast conditions, number two, the county management advances that use times in the business manner. Ensure the permanent holders comply with the provisions of all other fundamental standards, rules and rights. Prove motion to the next recommended approval of a conditional use permit for a cabin to meet other authority condition.
I'll make a motion to approve the C U P.
Okay, great, second?
I'll second it.
It's tough to be at a hot seat.
How's it feel? Okay, should we do a quick roll call on that one?
Yes, really, yes.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, yes.
When I applied for this, I forgot to sign the check.
Oh sure.
Maybe one, re-sign the check.
It's intentional.
Stick around.
Yeah.
Motion carries, now, do we have anybody else to discuss?
Did you hear a ruler a minute?
Uh, didn't we, yeah. Been a long time. Okay. Okay, all those in approval, say aye. Any opposed, please, it's still light up, that's good.